I would like to call the June 19, 2018 Riverton City Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:46 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
I would move that we consider claims to be paid in the amount of $734,512.19, manual checks in the amount of $29,878.30, payroll and liabilities for June 6, 2018 in the amount of $226,224.85, for a total of $990,615.34.
For a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion or questions?
I have a question. This is probably directed to Mia. I noticed in the weekly report last week and then noted in the finance report, the YDOT payment. Could you just kind of clarify or just kind of reiterate that, you know, kind of how that happened and what we're doing with that?
Sure, of course. We received an invoice from YDOT for the South Federal and Monroe Boulevard project. And it was in the amount of $77,874.99. It dated back to 2016. After we went back and reviewed the project costs, we were supposed to have been getting billed for indirect costs, and they were allocated at .0823% of the overall total project costs. We expected to see those on our monthly bills as we were receiving them from YDOT. However, they did not bill us, nor did we catch that we were not paying for the indirect costs. So we did go back and review all of our records, and indeed, we do owe them the money. So we wanted to get that done this fiscal year budget cycle.
Going forward, I mean, any concerns about this happening again? I mean, what do we have in place to make sure we don't have this happen with our next project where we're dealing with YDOT?
We actually received refunds on two other projects from YDOT where there was some incorrect or erroneous billing that we overpaid. I don't know that we actually have a specific system in place. However, through the course of the North Federal project, we will be watching our invoices very closely and making sure that the costs that we are seeing are actual costs incurred for our billing.
Since this falls in a different fiscal year, does it affect our close of the last budget? That, like, do we have to do something?
No, we won't have to do anything as far as the fiscal year that it should have been paid out of. With this fiscal year, we do have the funding because we budgeted for some specific projects that we will not spend the money on this year. So we will not be over-expending the overall line items to pay for that this year.
So to be clear, and even though it was YDOT's mistake, we're taking care of it for them?
It's YDOT's mistake, but we do owe the money. Yes, we will be paying it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Madam Chair.
Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And then, do we have any further business?
We have none.
Okay, then, meeting adjourned.
18th, 2018 Regular Council Meeting of the City of Riverton, order at 7 o'clock PM. Councilmember Bailey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we come before you this evening in the capacity of the Riverton City Council and pray for insight and understanding that we might be able to address all the issues that come before us and that we might be able to carry out the responsibilities that we have for the benefit of the citizens of Riverton. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve and are thankful for the pleasant circumstances under which we find ourselves. We do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Present.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Peterson this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I declare that we do have a quorum this evening. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
My name is Pastor Matt White. I'm from the Pavilion Community United Methodist Church, and I'm the Vice Chair of Eagles Hope Transitions. And this is Michelle Wiedemeyer. She is the Executive Director. And I would just like to thank the city council for supporting us. And when I stood before you last time, I had asked for a $4,000 credit. And before that, Chief Broadhead had got a sixth. So you had given us upwards of $10,000 that when we became a true 401(c)(3) nonprofit, we wouldn't be open today without your help. And I would just like to thank you, and we have done the proper becoming a service of the city. So hopefully, we're in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to us this evening? Do you have something that deals with the rezon? Okay. Consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, June 5, 2018, Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, June 12, 2018, Council Work Session. Approval of the minutes, June 19, 2018, Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for June 19, 2018. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of May, 2018. Ordinance Number 18-002 on second reading, updating city engineer references throughout the Riverton Municipal Code. I'll read that by title only. An ordinance pertaining to all city engineer references throughout the city, the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Ordinance Number 18-007 on second reading, rezon of 3402 West Main Street. Proposed ordinance Number 18-007 on second reading. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezon of 3402 West Main Street to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from residential R2A to commercial Highway CH.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
The Finance Committee Recommendation on Approval of Claims to Be Paid in the Amount of $734,512.19, manual checks in the amount of $29,878.30, and payroll liabilities for 6/7/18 in the amount of $226,224.85, for a total of $990,615.34.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, present to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor, I will abstain from the Bailey and Wex line items on the Finance Committee and also ordinance Number 18-007.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Introduction and Oath of Office, Riverton Police Department Officers Donahue and Dixon, police chiefs reporting.
Your Honor, counsel, thank you very much. I'm very excited to introduce our two new police officers with the city of Riverton. I have Lamar Dixon and Jim Donahue. So Lamar and Jim started with us about six weeks ago. They've made it through their first three weeks of classroom, and then they've both been out on the street. The exciting thing about these two are they both have a lot of experience. Jim Donahue came to us from Colorado via Lander. He's got about 15 years of law enforcement experience, does not have to go back through the academy, which saves us a lot of time and gets him right out on the street pretty much for the fact that we're a little bit undermanned, and so Jim is a great asset to the Riverton Police Department. Lamar, same thing. He came from California, has years of experience there, does not have to go through the academy, and again, can just get right out on the street and help us with our manpower shortages. They're both married, they both have two kids, and we just cannot be more excited to have them as our new police officers. Mayor, if you would come down and...
We're going to do a swearing-in, right?
Yes, sir. That'd be fantastic.
I'll bring my cheat sheet.
Great.
Okay.
Just as a side note, it has taken us a long time to outfit Lamar because he's so tall.
I do see that your pants do come down to your shoes.
Oh, yeah. That happened today.
All right. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the state of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated...
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Caused to be done by others.
Or caused to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Dixon?
Welcome.
Again, again.
Thank you.
Knocking aboard.
Again. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Why are we all tall? Actually, when I get up there, they're all tall.
Yeah.
Except for Donovan.
Hang on by Romero.
Okay, then I'm okay. All right, well, it's great. I'm excited to see two new guys come in and be ready to go to work. And that brings us up to where we're, I think we're just short two officers. That'll mean everybody at the PD will be breathing easier. They won't have quite as much overtime to deal with. The next item is a public hearing in consideration of a fireworks permit application. The Riverton Rendezvous and Little League, Riverton Little League, two applications. Could we get the city clerk's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The city clerk's office has received two applications for fireworks permits. One of them for Riverton Little League and the other for Riverton Rendezvous. These are two events that happen in our community every year, and we're excited to present you with the applications. They both have letters of recommendation from the fire chief as well as a site plan, and nothing has changed with the site plan from previous years. So there is representation from both of the groups in the audience. If you have any questions, you can certainly ask them.
Okay, thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? I don't see anybody. The Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. Discussion on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. I declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the fireworks permit applications.
Motion to approve the fire permit applications for the Riverton Rendezvous and the Riverton Little League. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. Have a good time. Consideration of Forecast Inc. Contract. Public Works Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Coming before you is basically an extension of the revenue management contract we have for Denver Air Connection Service. On April 5, 2016, the city council entered into agreement with Forecast Inc. That contract was extended last year and is set to expire June 30 of 2018. Starting July 1, as you know, Denver Air Connection will start its third year of service to Riverton Regional Airport. And as that service starts, we want to have a consultant in place to manage the revenue and maximize the seats on each of those aircrafts departing our airport and also coming to our airport. To get this consultant in place in May, the city put forth a request for qualification. This year, we only received one interested party. It was Forecast Inc. We reviewed their submittal of qualifications with Sheridan, and we still find them to be very qualified to do this service. After making that determination, we looked at their fee structure, and we are very pleased with the fee structure and recommend the city council approve this agreement with them. As we look forward, the fees for revenue management service with Forecast Inc. will be $3,375 a month. This is a reduction from the previous year, which was $5,000 a month. Annually, that is represented, excuse me, that represents annually $40,500 in the new contract. The previous contract was $60,000. So we're still getting great service, and we were able to receive a lower price for this service. Therefore, we recommend that the city council enter into agreement with Forecast Inc. to perform the revenue management portion of our air service this upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the contract with Forecast Inc.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the contract with Forecast Inc. for revenue management.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? So I do have a question. So does this, have they, because we're looking at the potential with Denver Air Connections to move from their 135 to 121, and then the possibility of code sharing with somebody, is this all calculated into this?
Your Honor, thank you for that question. Yes, it is. When we made our request for qualifications, we were sure to put as part of the qualifications 121 and 135 experience, and then also experience transitioning between the two systems and licenses.
So they figured they're going to get enough money to do that, too? Great. Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 18-009, first reading fencing. Community Development Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This really came up because we had a request from Trinity de Lutheran to put a fence around their rear playground. And it became apparent that to do that on their property line would require some sort of variance. And when we looked at the zoning that they're currently in, which is commercial one, you can put a building on the property line, but a fence would be required to be 48 inches tall under our old zoning or our fencing ordinance. So rather than have them go through the motion of variance, we thought it would be wise to update our fencing code to appropriately reflect being able to put a commercial fence on the property line at six feet in height. They could go over if they want with the engineered plans for a foundation for the fence. So that's really where this came from. We also thought it would be a good idea to, rather than putting all of the verbiage into the code, produce guidelines or fencing guidelines that we can reference in the code and then update through resolution rather than three readings. It just makes it easier to change. If we run into another situation like this, again, this was brought to us in late April, and it's obviously taken until now to get it to first reading, so that that can be a quite lengthy process. So with that, staff would recommend adoption of the new ordinance as well as the parking, or I'm sorry, I had parking on the mind, fencing guidelines. And with that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read ordinance Number 18-009 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance Number 18-009 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 17, zoning to revise Chapter 17.16, general requirements, Section 17.16.0450, fences, hedges, trees, and walls of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-009 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance Number 18-009 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Laner?
Mr. Carr, could you just clarify for me? I just want to make sure I understand. So the city of Riverton fencing requirements document, that's the proposed procedural process or in the things that would be changed by resolution? It's not part of the... It's not part of the, not part of the proposed ordinance? That's what you're proposing?
Correct.
Okay. Is there these, the standards, say, for example, the seven feet or less, walls four feet or less, yada, yada, all the way through here, are these based on any particular existing standards already in place in other municipalities? Or did you just make them up? Or what's, what was your standard for these?
We have a Yahtzee game in the back, no.
Yeah.
No, they are definitely based on design standards. The reason being, seven feet's kind of a magical number when engineering really starts to play a role because of wind load as well as weight. And so those are very standardized numbers, as well as for site distances around corners, the site triangles that we've built into the illustrations. All of those are fairly standard, yes.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Consideration of BLM lease agreement. Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Bureau of Land Management leases space at Riverton Regional to provide firefighting services for the region. They have their seat-based operation. Seat stands for single-engine air tankers. And this lease is basically a renewal of a previous lease that the Bureau of Land Management has had with us. However, there are two specific changes. One is they wanted a bigger footprint, so we accommodated that. So the footprint you see now is 19,766 square feet. The second is we are requesting reimbursement for an improvement we made for them. As they lease space, they will bring in trailers, and they needed power for those trailers. So during this current fiscal year, the airport invested $4,400 to bring power to that location, and now we're reimbursing ourselves for that investment through this lease agreement. So it's basically the same lease that we've had with them for a lot of years, just with a larger footprint and then that reimbursement clause. We therefore recommend that the city council enter into this agreement with the Bureau of Land Management. They have reviewed this and are basically waiting for tonight to execute.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the BLM lease agreement.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this agreement with the Bureau of Land Management. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Kyle.
Your Honor, I would ask who is paying for the electricity on this lease agreement?
Your Honor, the BLM will be paying for the electricity. We went back and forth on that, and we felt that it was too challenging for us to have the meter in our name and then anticipate the amount of electricity they would use through a year. So it's easier for them just to put the meter in their name and pay for their own electricity.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. A consideration of lease agreement Fremont County Amateur Radio Group. City clerk's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you tonight is a lease agreement for the Fremont County Amateur Radio Group, also known as ham radio. This group is a nonprofit. They do it, they use the radio system as a hobby. They do, they have been leasing tract of land up on Airport Hill. It's 50-foot by 70-foot tract of land that has a shed and some ham radio equipment on it. They've been paying $50 a year for the past couple of years, and before that, they were paying $25 a year for that section of land. We could not find a lease agreement, and Mr. Miller, after coming in, indicated that he never had a lease agreement. So this lease agreement just establishes that there is an agreement between the city and him for that property. And with that, I'd stand for any questions.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the Fremont County Amateur Radio Group lease on Airport Hill.
So moved.
Second.
That seems like a deal. I guess they're totally nonprofit, and so there's no commercial advantage to it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Public hearing in consideration of Resolution 1377, fiscal year 1819 budget. City Administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, here we are. After starting in March and a number of different meetings, we now bring forward the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget for you for your consideration. Looking through some of the past projects that we've had, one of the things that I see that's consistent is most budgets start with a quote. I will tell you, do not Google budget quotes because it's depressing. It's those that are funny or a little dark. However, we did manage to find the one to start us off with that says, "The budget is telling your money where to go instead of wondering where it went." As much as I like Dave Ramsey, I do like the idea that this is, this does set up a good plan for us and how we get, and how we intend to use our money and where we intend to make it go. Keeping in mind, we just did budget amendments last, last time we were here, so we know that the best-laid plans are, are sometimes need some adjusting, and we will do so throughout the year. With that, we start out with the overall budget of about $26.5 million across all funds within the city. We have a capital expenditure or an anticipated capital expenditure of approximately 11.4 million, almost $11.5 million across all funds. As denoted, that's about 43% of the total budget. Our budget, budget funds or the funds within our budget are usually into two different, are two different types. Our general fund covers most of our general services. You see the police department, you see the streets department, you see the parks department. Those other funds are generally the enterprise funds, such as water, wastewater, sanitation, airport. And as such, as such are budgeted differently and behave differently. The thing that we find that is a little bit of amusing throughout this is that it's easy for the general fund to budget, to give money to enterprise funds, to projects and the like. It is difficult to do it the other way, so that stream runs one way a lot of the time. Compared to previous years, I would point out that we are just slightly higher than we were last year, and we are lower than we were in 2016, but not 2017. Budgets fluctuate, as we all know, having done this a number of times. Capital goes up, a particular year will be heavy and another one light. So these things are pretty common. We do maintain a fiscal reserve of 18.5% as per, as per our policy, and we will discuss that a little bit more down the road. But this budget is provided to you with that in place. Revenues in all funds exceed operational expenses, with the exception of the airport. That's operational and not necessarily capital. We will discuss how we do cover capital, however. We are aided by reserves slightly, with that in mind, in the water and wastewater funds due to capital expenditures. Those amounts are $24,423 and $25 and change, respectively. It is, we did recently do a, I'm sorry, there is a rate study that is scheduled for this year. The cost of that is distributed amongst the different enterprise funds for this coming year, and we would intend, if adopted, to start that almost immediately. It will take a few months, so we would need to have those conversations earlier on. General fund revenues, as we discussed, are about $10.6 million. There has been a slight increase in property tax, use tax, and court fines and supplemental funding in comparison to 2018. I would point out that court fines have a lot, the increase in court fines have a lot to do with the collection and the work of staff in that department. They work, they work very hard in trying to get those numbers increased, and we do have more than a fair amount on the books. Supplemental funding is up comparatively, which you note at the bottom of the slide is direct distribution at $1.345 million. This is scheduled to be the same next year, assuming appropriation by the legislature again, and there's no challenges to that. It went through relatively directly, relatively easily, sorry. However, there has been, have been decreases in franchise fees, sales tax, gas tax, special fuel tax, and cigarette tax compared to the 2018 budget. Franchise fees, for everybody's clarity, have to do with, such as Rocky Mountain Power or those types of items, as opposed to the lease agreements like you see with the tower that we discussed that went up previously. So they are different. If I were to compare the two, we had an increase, the increase section went up about $195,000. The decrease went down about $209,500, with a net result of a negative $14,500 estimated. So that, that was a little bit of a challenging when we consider moving forward. Sales and use tax are probably the largest portion or largest single portion of revenue at about 20%. We are behind 10% compared to 2018, and 2018 numbers did not meet estimates. Those estimates were based on the, on a spike or a projected spike associated with the eclipse, and we didn't realize that. I will tell you, from having worked in another community at that time, everybody, most people did the same thing, and most people received the same result. But it was reasonable to expect it at that time. In the end, we end up, I think, about $47,000, $47,000 low overall with sales and use. Use was higher. Sales tax was lower. Additionally, general fund revenues count on a number of grants, about 18% of the entire budget. 20 grants are administered, administered and accounted for by staff, mounting to about three point, almost $3.7 million towards capital projects. This is a relatively impressive number, considering the work that is done here. General fund expenditures are divided across all of these different departments. I will denote the main change here is that victim witness has been broken out this year as opposed to being lumped in with the police department. That is a significant change and is more cost accounting than anything. With that in mind, overall, we discuss the $10.6 million with operational expenditures of about 6.5 and capital expenditures of about 4.1. And this does include community services at an estimated 290, at a proposed to approximately Moving on, sorry. Some of the highlights of this fund, just to give you a little bit of flavor, we do have the North Federal Storm Water and Lighting Project. That's about almost $2.35 million in total. Construction of the regional storm water facility is a total of approximately $950,000. Our portion of that out-of-pocket that is paid for through direct distribution is about $275,000. I, if anybody's wondering why people are smiling, is because it was originally titled the Regional Detention Facility, and everybody asked us why we're building a jail. We've changed the name. Ernie, please write the right name. We do denote development of a master plan. On Thursday of this week, I will attend the meeting down in Cheyenne for the final consideration, and we are hopeful for that. That is a $50,000 grant that will cover half of that. That project would then begin almost immediately. We have some of the existing documents that we need to do for an RFP, so we have estimated that at approximately $100,000. We do have two patrol vehicles for $100,000 total, not individually. That is outfitted. Replacement of and upgrades to our IT system, a new E911 system, which totals $371,000 but will be paid over multiple years at $53,000 per year. And finally, we did, we did propose or are proposing implementation of the NeoGov system for HR management throughout the city. This will address items such everything from hiring all the way through review, through reviews and processing, training for individuals. We feel it is, the return on investment for this will be solid and does comply with council goals. As a quick note, there are, oh, I'm sorry. Here we are. I went to the wrong place. There are a couple of future items that I will mention throughout this. One is we have discussed replacement of our ERP system for our courts, for our finance. That has been an ongoing conversation. You'll notice that it is not in this budget. It was one of the items that was cut this year to try to make sure we had a balanced budget for you, but it nonetheless exists within our capital plan that has been developed. That's about $300,000 ballpark. It could be a little less. We can do it in stages, and we will be having that discussion later on. We also managed to, we did cut a mower, Parks mower at about $60,000, and future consideration will need to be given to the stormwater plan that we've discussed at length. Other than the general fund, we also get into the enterprise funds. Our four main enterprise funds being water, sewer, sanitation, and airport. Enterprise funds are intended, of course, to operate as businesses. Rates were increased for water, sewer, and sanitation to, by 2.4% in May based on the CPI. Cash balances, as we kind of discussed or alluded to, can be used for operations of that particular fund. We have discussed also in the past the use of funds as loans. They can be used as loans to the general fund, but not really grants, if you will, unless they're for services. As we've kind, there is an external rate study scheduled for water, sewer, and sanitation, as we've discussed. When we last talked about our rates, the question did come up, you know, is this enough? Honestly, the answer, obviously, because we're subsidizing a little bit from reserves in a couple of those accounts, is, well, probably not. However, the reason that we don't just go, okay, well, let's go to 2.6 or 3, is because one of the things we want to do is make sure that the number we're proposing truly does account for what we need in terms of capital, in terms of long-term planning. So we plan on having one conversation with you, not three, and that would be the intent. Starting out with the water fund, water fund revenues at three, almost $4 million, which includes that transfer already denoted at about $24,000. Expenditures at 2.4 and capital expenditures at about 1.5. We do have the replacement of the water lines through North Federal Reconstruction Project as a highlight, and we are planned for the third phase of the Riverton Water Supply Project. Does not include Cowboy Lane, that is future, but it would finish out the Riverton Water Supply Project Phase 3. This is, we, one of the other items that wasn't put within this budget but is of note because we will probably be working on it this year, is the meter project, and it's divided between this fund, water and wastewater. The meter project is approximately $1.8 million and is a replacement of our reading equipment and the reading equipment on the meters and the technology that we use to actually do the reading. Our current soft, our current items, our current software, I guess I would say, is not supported and no longer supported, hard to get parts. Seems to be a conversation that happens over and over again. As such, we're talking about replacing these meters over multiple years. However, it's a very significant project, obviously one that we want to take into account when we do our rate adjustments at 1.2. That will be considered within this next rate structure. It'll be a conversation we have at length. But it's important the council knows that this is something that not only needs to happen, but kind of has to happen. Otherwise, the riding around and going at it one by one will get a little tedious on The sewer fund revenues are approximately approaching $2.5 million. Again, this is a transfer of approximately $25,000 from the reserve cash. Operational expenditures of about 1.9 and capital expenditures of about $575,000. Sewer lines through North Federal, obviously, are one of those items that go along with the water replacement. We are also, another highlight is the Bell Street Sewer Line replacement, which is a 760-foot clay line to be replaced. Those things scare me a lot. And about 18 taps are on that. There are also the UV inlets, which is a replacement of two valve used, two valves used in our UV process for sanitation. And of course, the meter project that's going to be split. These are some of the highlight, as, as we go through the highlights, I would just quickly note that the highlights are just that highlights. There is a multitude of items that are contained within this, including smaller purchases that aren't brought up, but please feel free to ask questions either now or as we go along. that aren't brought up, but please feel free to ask questions either now or as we go along. The sanitation fund revenues are approx, are approaching $2.5 million with expenditures at about 2.1 and capital expenditures of about $321,000. There is a remaining balance to transfer to reserve of $28,376. There is a replacement of a sanitation truck. I believe that's about $350,000. They are not cheap. I started doing the math on how many pickups and how much, how many pickups they do in a single day, then I multiplied it by the week, then I multiplied it by the month, and then I started getting scared at how much that thing has to go up and down. So I start understanding on why they, on why they run out. The future item that I, that is important for us to look at is something that we are doing work on right now, which is an evaluation of the old landfill that is on Smith Street and the remediation that's, where, the remediation that is likely to have to happen on that on some level, due to our existence on, on, on the state list. Currently, the study that's currently being conducted, that has been paid for in this year and that we've been doing for a number of months now, will help narrow down the options that we have, so we can have a more intelligent conversation. Worst-case scenario puts it in the $10 million range. Best-case scenario and funding at that point from the state is about 75%. So when we look at this fund, we look at approximately $800,000 in reserve. That's nice. However, at, in the worst-case scenario, with the best-case funding, that's $2.5 million we have to pay out of pocket. So we are thoughtful when we move forward on a lot of these to make sure we try to have that reserve for a purpose, not for just a cushion. The Airport Fund is one of those that we have had a fair amount of conversation about throughout this process. The Airport Fund revenues at about 2.5 and operational expenditures of about $600,000 and capital expenditures of about 2.2 and change. This includes the aviation apron rebuild that is actually going to follow this presentation. So this fund, the, the amount of work that has gone into the airport, obviously, the mayor sits on the, on the state group that is working towards air service. Our FAST group has been working diligently to try to move forward with air service. As we look at this budget, we do show support for our airport. We have an MR, the MRG for $150,000 is covered through the general fund, as is the 183 for capital and 101 in operations. One of the things I would draw your attention to simply is that the PFC funds, which is Passenger Facility Charge Funds, those funds charged every time somebody gets a ticket, buys a ticket on an airline, sorry. Those are put into, those are put into an account, and we can be reimbursed for our portion of that, our portion of that, of capital project costs and the like. General Fund has paid some of those, so we can get a reimbursement for it and use it for the airport, and that is what we've done here, to the tune of about $230,000. I would only draw your attention to it because we're not going to have $230,000 next year. And so that's one of those conversations that is, that we're having right now to try to make sure that, you know, we're trying to find a long-term solution for our airport to try to make sure that all the good things that we have from it continue. Other funds that you have currently are your Economic Development Fund to the tune of about $24,000. You see this with the Riverwalk and the repayment of that agreement. Our 911 Fund where we, for about $24,000, where we receive monies on, on cell bills, on telephone bills. There has been some challenge in how that is distributed, and we're looking into that a little bit more. We are hoping that the new E911 system that is budgeted will aid us in that. So that, that is going to be a future conversation. Of course, the 1% sales tax revenues and expenditures are in here with all of the different items that are denoted. We have North Federal, Riverview Road, East Fremont Waterline Project, the Big Wyoming Resurfacing Project, real big fan of that, East Logan Park Resurfacing Project, the East Pershing Concrete Project, and of course, Gannett Drive Davis Lane Project. I, I will say that having worked with, worked with the Forest Committee and, and observed all of the work that they've done to try to make really good decisions and try to explore all of the options have been impressive. So I believe the 1% funding is being used more than appropriately with plenty of attention being paid to it. Debt service is one of those items that we always have to talk about with the budget. Currently, we have seven different loans, seven different items for debt service of about $215,000. Those items are denoted there for you with the number of loans in parentheses. Those, some, without getting too far into debt service, because that's one of those things you can really start diving into, we have a multiple, multitude of loans at different rates. They range from 0 to 5% on different items. The airports, the Airport Fund has the DCI building that is out there, and of course, we have a, there is a payment that we are receiving on that, so there is somewhat of an offsetting revenue. And Mia Harris did manage to make sure that it wasn't being taxed, because it was, we were paying taxes a public, on a public building, and that was getting to be a little bit challenging for us. So that was one of those positive items that we were just kind of fine-tuning within this budget. But as I said, loans run from 0 to 5% over multiple years, and with outstanding, the total outstanding debt in the water fund is approximately $1.47 million. So a lot of these items are going to be 20-year items. One of the times we talked about getting, having money transferred between general or enterprise funds is the discussion with administrative allocations. Now, giving money is one thing, paying for service is a completely different one, and therefore, we have administrative allocations. This year provides for $1.2 million of relief to the general fund. These funds are generally used to offset the cost that those different funds would have paid for the same service. For instance, the Finance Department covers not only the general fund, but it also covers utility billing, it covers any, any HR work that Kristin does. So some of those funds, some of those costs are distributed accordingly. This year, it's about 1.7, which is just, which is just up from last year. We have a nice, big spreadsheet that we can talk, that I'm more than happy to talk about at length at some point if you want to. But what that, the reason that it can change over multiple years, you can have something less in one year and more allocations in that same year. The reason is that the calculations are extensive, and something can go up in a particular department, such as water or sewer, and that can affect that allocation significantly based on the, on the distribution method. So this year, at about 1.227 million. And in fiscal year 17 was a low year at, at about a million, but fiscal year 16 was about one, about a billion dollars, a little over a million dollars. This, our methodology was looked at two years ago?
Yes, it was.
Two years ago, which is why you see the change in those particular years. So it was thoughtful, it wasn't haphazard, it was just fine-tuned. One of the items that we also do that is paid for out of our capital, specifically our direct distribution, is contract for services. There are nine different ones, and it is proposed at $290,000, 900, $290,913. That's allocated for contracted services. It is a proposed decrease from the previous year. Of the nine agents, of the nine, the fire, of the nine agencies, I apologize, it is important to note that fire is a little bit different. While they did see the 15% decrease that was applied across the board, it does not affect the fire pension that is paid separate from this. We have talked to the fire department, I spoke with the fire chief about their, their request, and they were comfortable with this change, because the, the pension wasn't touched. So theirs overall did not see the 15%, but their direct, that went from 10 to 8.5, did. This has been a little bit of a tough year in a budget. It's not, the sky is not falling, I'm not Chicken Little, and things are going to, things are doing well, and things are picking up, it seems like. However, this is, as it's been a challenging year, we've, this budget is proposed with no merits or step increases, so we essentially have a wage freeze at this point. That is across the board here. Health insurance is not scheduled to increase this year. We've had that conversation before with Ms. Watson, and that is wonderful. However, it is not something we can expect to continue. We all know that health insurance goes up over and over again, we've seen it, you've seen it year after year here. You have already started taking some of the necessary steps. We're asking the state to consider using, having municipalities take part in the state system, we would still pay our fair share. But Kristin, do you remember exactly what the savings would have been citywide, approximately?
About $60,000.
60?
Mm-hmm.
So there's about a $60,000 savings right there. That's a couple $60,000 savings, is a nice chunk of change to have. That's something we're going to be working on. Under capital, we've talked a little bit about it. It does show an increase in capital from 10 million, from 10 million to 11, 10.2 to 11.4. We do have a new capital plan this year that's going to be included in the budget that we've already discussed during our budgeting process. That is likely to turn into a seven-year plan over the next year as it develops a little further, with the sixth and seventh year being more speculative. Not, it's kind of, anything past five years gets a little troublesome, but sometimes we know it's coming, so we want to be planning for it. It's kind of like waving from the horizon. Some of the notable projects we've already talked about, like North Veteran, the storm water projects, our storm water project, sorry, North Veteran, then we have, of course, our storm water project. That is the one that is east of the Eastern Shoshone Business Park. It's an item that has already been talked about for the 950,000, and we pay 275. Some of that is, that makes up as a grant, the rest that makes up after that 275, some of it is grant and some of it is loan. So when we look back to debt service, understand that there's going to be some additional debt service over time. This is a necessary project and is planned. We do not have an exact number. The 950 is an estimate, the 275 is an estimate. Part of that is because we don't know the total cost, and part of it is because the Eastern, Eastern Shoshone Business Park Development has agreed to take part in some of the design and maintenance of that, or design, build, and maintenance of that, because it serves that property a bit as well. That type of partnership are the positive ones we do want to seek, simply because it does alleviate some of our direct cost and our ongoing cost. We did discuss the general aviation apron, and of course, the master plan. These are some of the big ones, but of course, not all of them. We talked about the 18.5% reserve. We do have that where it needs to, we do have that in place. All funds are projected to meet the, the appropriate reserves. We, we have had many conversations about reserves and cash on hand and, and cash for cash flow. Your cash flow is at your two-month, which has been where it needs to be in the general fund, and you are at 18.5% for your reserve. However, your 18.5% reserve is meant using cap, some of it is using capital that is already set to move specifically to North Federal and the like. This means that we are meeting our, our requirement. However, long-term, we need to be looking at and being careful to make sure those levels are where we want them. I say where we want them, not at 18.5%, because of course, we'll have to have the conversation on an ongoing basis about what the appropriate amount to keep is and how we calculate it. So we do have the 18.5, but we do have the 18.5%. At the very end of this, as I've kind of denoted throughout, there are a number of future considerations. These are things that I want you to remember and take away as we go into the year. One of them is sales tax. Sales tax is, of course, one of those indicators of economic development. It's something that obviously we track. You see them in your dashboards monthly, and the reason for that is because it's so telling. That is a big revenue source for us, we need to keep our eye on it, and we need to try to move it up. It's a nice gauge, but do keep in mind, it's two months behind. The other item we talked about is a little bit of insurance. We didn't see insurance move up. That's always one of those personnel costs that can really affect us and can really take a little bit of a bite. I've appreciated the work moving forward with the legis, on the legislative side, trying to get some assistance there. Our airport, we could use some help in terms of revenue to help offset some of the, some of that funding. That's a challenge that we have been trying to meet over and over again, and let me be clear, because I don't want to have a false expectation. I've been an airport manager. That airport was not self-sufficient, it was commercial, and that company was flying at risk, and it was still, and that airport was still receiving a subsidy. We receive a subsidy from the federal government and the state for our capital projects. Airports, especially in rural America, are not self-sustaining entities. That is absolutely true. However, as, as we take funding to help our airport, we need to keep in mind that if we can find funding to offset that, to make it, to make it a little bit easier, to make sure it's more sustainable, those are positive things that we should look forward to. We've done too much work at this point to do anything else. We've talked about storm water briefly, through the one project, but storm water is something that is going to come up again and again. When we were doing the goal setting, the item that we have never done is the storm water plan. A storm water plan is something that our Clean Water Act is going to impact directly. And as such, it's something that is coming down the pipe, and if we don't look at it now, is going to be challenging, much more challenging later. We have already started taking part in the discussion about storm water as utilities and the legislation that's associated with that. Currently, your storm water work is being paid out of the general fund. That's another one of those items where it just becomes another thing that is usually lumped more in with enterprise funds, but is currently being paid out of general fund. It's a long-term conversation, please keep it in mind. And the last two being direct distribution and funding reform. We consistently hear how the state is, how are we going to fund this, and how are we going to fund that? The conversation about direct distribution is ongoing and is happening right now. We hear it all the time. How taxation works, local options, okay, and is that going to replace direct distribution? And as such, we have two things to do as we move forward. One is to be part of that conversation in terms of how our funding is going to be allocated, how we are going to raise funds for our operations in the future. And then if direct distribution is going to stay in place, we need to lobby for ourselves. We need to speak up and say, hey, Riverton has a lot going on, we need funds to do these things. So those are conversations that have to go on. Next steps, in order to say all that and talk about all of those things, one, we need to be with our legislators, we need to be with our partners. We need to find ways to, solutions and be part of the conversations. I will tell you, since being here, that happens more here than I've seen in other places, and that's very heartening, because it means that we're already developing the relationships that are going to help us have those conversations and be heard. When we were at the legislature at WAM, it was apparent that our legislators are listening to us, and they are willing to have those conversations with us. Airport funding, when that subsidy, that amount of those dollars, those subsidies, we need to have those conversations and we need to figure out how to do that, improve. Storm water funding, partnerships I've already denoted, and as always, this is a budget, so we're talking about money, and I love grants, and there are funding opportunities there, and we need to be on top of them. We need to be looking at them. And, and as such, I think those, with those things in mind, as we move forward, I think we're going to be very successful this year. I am very positive about this budget. Was it a little tighter? Yes. But was it very positive? Absolutely. As and as I end up here, I wanted to say just a couple things, a couple thank-yous. One, council thank you for your participation and your input throughout this process. It has been incredibly useful. The senior staff and our supervisors, thank you so much for everything that you do. This entire budget was a group effort that came together because everybody tightened their belt, got down to it, and figured out what they could do. People here lost sleep about what it took to get us down the road, and they did a great job. I couldn't be more proud to work with them. And I want to give a special thanks to Mia Harris, our Finance Director, and Kristin Watson, our Human Resources Director. I want you to understand that every time we had an idea, and I had a harebrained idea, hey, what if we did this? That's another iteration of an analysis that they have to run. They made me stop doing it more than twice a day. But throughout this entire process... twice a day. But throughout this entire process, they've had to look at any change we made and what that, what that means and what that means. And there are times that Mia would have three different looks in a single day at how things work if we did something. That's difficult, but she makes it look effortless. The work on our HR side is we've had those conversations. Mia has done a wonderful job. So to them, I would call them out individually and say, thank you very much for your outstanding work. This has been something that they put together, and I'm very proud to be in part of their team. With that, I tried to get through this in relatively short order, so thank you very much, and I would stand for any questions that you have, but most likely, I'll have to look at Mia, so.
Thank you, Tony. Does anybody on council have any questions about the budget? Doesn't look like it, huh? Okay, so, so just for folks at home, city council had a, had a great opportunity last year and this year to participate in every one of the budget meetings that the city held. And so we, we participated in it right at the grassroots level. So by the time you get it to these numbers, we've been looking at it for quite some time. So we're really comfortable with, with staff. We understand the budget pretty well and, and are satisfied that what we have is the best that we can possibly do. So with the city clerk, Mike, have you got something to?
Yes. Again, I would like to echo what you said, Mr. Mayor, and I think the staff did a great job, and it's extremely difficult when, you know, budgets are tight, because there's decisions that have to be made that aren't necessarily very easy. When there's more money, it's really easy to say, oh yeah, let's go ahead and buy another of this or another of that. And this year, that was not one of those years. And so I appreciate everybody, you know, again, tightening their belt and helping to make those decisions that were not easy, but, but they're for the best interest of the city. And so I think, again, they did a great job. Thank you.
The chair, let's see, would the city clerk please read Resolution Number 1377 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Excuse me. Proposed ordinance number 1377, or excuse me, proposed resolution number 1377. A resolution providing for the 2018-2019 budget for the City of Riverton for the fiscal year beginning the first day of July 2018 and ending the 30th day of June 2019 inclusive.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public, public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
My name is Pastor Matt White. I'm from the Pavilion Community Methodist Church and a vice chair of Eagle Hope Transitions. I was hoping that budget would reflect a contract for services with Eagle Hope's Transitions and that the, what I had mentioned earlier, the council had granted $10,000 over a period of time. Those funds are exhausted, and so without a contract of services, we pay approximately about $550 a month. We would have to pay for water, sewer, and garbage, and that comes out. That's where that $6,000 had come up. And I would ask that on a year, to be safe, if we could get a, I know we applied, but it doesn't reflect it in your budget, and that if it's not in that contract of city services, then we won't be able to come towards the council again and ask for that. And I would, I would like to see a $7,000 contract with Eagles Hope Transitions for that bill. It's, it's a tremendous help for us. Otherwise, we will have to start immediately figuring that in our budget, which is a lot tinier than yours.
That's, that's true. Tony, if, if I may, sir. Go right ahead.
The reason it's not actually in your contract for services is because those, those granted dollars, if you will, came from enterprise funds, where essentially something was kind of forgiven, that certain amount of, so the contracts for services that you see that were presented, the $290,000, came directly from the general fund. In the past, you had approved that just through discussion and motion. So we can bring that back to you with a more finite number. You absolutely have provided those allotments, if you will, to Eagle, to Eagles Hope. So council may do it as they see fit. They may say, direct staff to bring something back to them with a more finite number, or however you prefer to move forward. And I believe, and I believe Mia Harris can actually speak to it even more with more history than that.
I think as Mr., Mr. White also had addressed, in fiscal year 1617, we did, you, the council did grant them $6,000 to cover their water, sewer, and sanitation services bills. In fiscal year 1718, you granted them $4,000 for the same purpose. So again, it's not in the budget simply because it is an enterprise fund item, and the contracts for services come out of the general fund. And so if it be your will, we can bring that up for further review and discussion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Can I maybe ask a clarification? So just so I'm understanding this. It's in the enterprise funds because essentially, we're saying that we won't expect to take in that revenue, and that's how it's accounted for in the enterprise fund. Normally, we would expect that revenue, and that's how we're accounting for it. So it's, I mean, it, it's six of one half dozen the other, depending upon where we put it and account for it. Account for it in the general fund or the enterprise fund. I, I mean, I don't see a problem, at least at this current, the way we're currently doing it, given the current history, I'm comfortable with that, but as long as that, and that sounds like that's correct, is that the head nod is, yes.
Right now, exhausted though. So we would be getting billed immediately unless something would be done, correct?
Correct.
Yes. So I, we thought, when I came before you last time, that we would have to be, it was, I thought we would have to be contract services then with the city as hell. I was presented that we wouldn't be going through this, coming to you, we're out of money again, we need 4,000 more, just set it up with contract services like BOA or the other ones, and that figure I look at is about $7,000 for what we're asking for. So I don't know how you would, how you would do it, but I was hoping to see Eagles Hope up there, but I don't know if we're in the budget at all. So that's, I guess, what I'm asking.
Well, the way I understand it is, yes, you are in the budget. Okay, but what we budgeted was that you wouldn't pay for water, sewer, and, and garbage.
Is that correct?
Your Honor, I believe that would be an item that you would need to, somebody would need to make a motion on, and then also, there would need to be a determination of the amount of relief that you're going to provide for their utility services for the next year.
Oh, so it is not billed into the budget at the present time?
No, Your Honor, it is not.
Okay.
So we discussed it, but not taken action on it?
That is correct, and I might say that with the contract for services, that is direct cash output that we provide to the other organizations, where in this instance, they're seeking relief for their utility services.
Right.
And when we had discussed this before, we had all been in approval of doing this again, and I think we had discussed the possibility of them reporting, much as the other contracts for services do, but I think in terms of creating the budget, rightfully so, contract for services, we're talking about a cash outlay towards them as opposed to not receiving revenue, so they're not listed there.
Okay. We wouldn't mind a cash outlay, though.
We wouldn't either.
Which, so, okay, staff, which way would you prefer to do that? Do you, you like it? I, I think the discussion that I've had is that, is that basically, when we do it out of an enterprise fund, what we're doing is we're letting the rest of the people who are paying into the enterprise fund subsidize that. Whereas if we do it as a, as a general fund allocation, then we have budgeted money that we get from the direct distribution for that purpose.
Your Honor, that's, your analysis of the two, of the two options is correct. The way that, I would say that if I had done it aside on one, one side or the other, it would be with the way you've been doing it. Continue to do it that way, with the enterprise funds, just not expecting the revenue.
You think that's the way we should do it?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
We do.
Do we have to be out of the public hearing first?
Yeah. Oh, yes, we're, we're.
We're in a public hearing.
We are in a public hearing right now. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Anything else? Any comments? Okay.
I move, close the public hearing.
Second.
We move and second that we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I vote to close the public hearing, and it is now closed. The chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1377.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the Resolution 1377, the fiscal year 1819 budget.
Second.
We move and second a discussion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Tim.
Move that we cover, I guess, the sanitation, water, am I missing anything? Expenses?
Sewer.
Sanit, sewer, yes. That we would, I guess, make it so that Eagles Hope isn't paying us for that as a part of our budget for the upcoming year, I suppose.
Second.
With a, with an amount?
Six thousand.
Six thousand. Not to exceed?
4,000.
It will exceed 4,000. It's $550 a month.
You're always welcome to come back.
When I came to you earlier, and we got to the 4,000 because we had a $2,000 huge garbage when we did a renovation on there, and we, that's where we came off. But we're getting with Mia, meeting with her, our actual bills are a little over 250 a month, which is a six, over $6,000 for the year. So in relooking at that, 7,000, we try to watch our water really close, keep maintenance for leaking things like toilets and stuff, so as not to exceed that. But as we get more people up and down, it's, I think, 4,000 won't reflect a true budget for that year, and you come to a number, 7,000 would be more to cover it, but I don't believe that's what we would use. We would be under it if, unless there was some catastrophic water leak or something like that. Is that?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mia.
We did, we did provide the $6,000 in fiscal year 1617 because there was some major cleanup that was going on at the property, but when we provided the 4,000 for last fiscal year 1718, it did cover all of your utility bills right up until this month. You have just a little over a $200 credit that's still remaining on this account that will pay your bill through June. So the $4,000 allocated did cover all of your utility bills for last year.
When we went over it, what does our bills, are they monthly, or about?
You've got one that's slightly less than $200 and another one that's a little more. What I would probably recommend is that you approve it or that you make the motion for the $4,000, and I'd be happy to go back and take a second look at your utility bills. If there's going to be an excess in that amount next year, that perhaps could be something that you could bring back to the table as you get further into the year. In what I'm seeing, the $4,000 was enough to cover it.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood.
$4,000 maximum, Your Honor.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
I have a question, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
So we have a motion to approve the budget. Would this be considered an amendment to the budget, or would it be just a motion on its own?
It would be an amendment to the budget.
I, I, Your Honor, I.
Maybe not.
I remember, you know, three minutes ago, the, I believe Councilman Hancock made a motion to amend, I think there was an amendment proposed.
Have that as an addition, and I don't know if, if we need to do it that way. I mean, last year, we didn't have it specifically as an amendment, but.
Your Honor, if, if we, if we approve the budget as presented and then present a motion afterward, that would work too. It might be cleaner.
Okay.
But we can do either.
We could kill the amendment and do this in a minute.
Let's just, let's just, let's just put this on hold for a second, okay? We can, we can, we can do that. We'll jump out of line. So do we have any other questions about the actual budget? No. All in favor of the, of the proposed budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. The budget passes. Back to this motion to cover sanitation, water, sewer, up to $4,000 for Eagles Hope.
That was my motion, and I will make it again.
Okay, and the second on that was?
Me.
Kyle.
Now I have a question.
Question.
So, so we're covering for 4,000, but we're assuming 4,000 was last year's figures. We're also increasing by 3% or 2%. So at some point in time, we assume that he will come forward and, and we need some additional money. We can, we can, at that time, discuss that option.
That's correct.
I mean, they're doing us a service.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, it, it may be worth, I think, looking at next year's budget development in creating this in a contract for services. I think some point can be made that we should be, at some point, be consistent in how we support this service in, in our community. So I, I mean, it's just part of discussion that in approximately 10 months from now, I think we should be, you know, incorporating this into, so a little place marker for 10 months from now that we kind of look at that as a, because he'll probably be coming back in 10 months from now, perhaps, based on Kyle's suggestion of a 2.4% increase. That will be a perfect time to remind us that, oh yeah, we needed to put that into a contract for services.
We will do so. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay, we did that. So, let's see, so yes. Okay, so bid award, airport improvement project, general aviation apron. Public Works Directors, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you remember, on December 19th, and then also on March 6th, the council passed Resolutions 1360 and 1368 for this project. These were resolutions that allowed staff to apply for grants for this project, both state and federal. The project centers on rehabilitation of the existing pavement, which was originally placed in the 70s, rehabilitated in 80s, and now it's time to, to pay some attention to it again. Staff had plans prepared and bid documents prepared by JVAsian, our consultant. We put those out for advertisement, and on May 24th at 1:00 PM, we opened bids publicly with only one responder, and it was Century Companies with the following results. For Schedule 1 of this project, $1,438,465. Schedule 2 was $151,177, and Schedule 3 was $85,021, for a total of $1,674,663. Staff, JVAsian, the FAA, and YDOT all reviewed the submitted bid documents and. Staff, JVIA, the FAA and YDOT all reviewed the submitted bid documents and found the bid to be responsive. It is very encouraging that this bid came in significantly lower than the engineer's estimate. I am very happy to say that we have a budget for this project and it falls within the budget that you just adopted. When we look at how the project will affect our funds, federal funds will cover a little over 1.3 million dollars of this project. State funds will cover 174,000, close to 175. And then our local match component, the local funding component, will be 151,218. And again, there is a sufficient budget for that. Our budget for this project will also include our construction management fees from JVIA. That's noted in your staff report, but not necessarily part of this bid award. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the bid that was received from Century Companies in the amount already denoted. And I will stand for questions.
The Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the bid for the aviation improvement project to Century Companies.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Kyle.
Why, why do you think there was only one bid? Was it just more than people or too technical or?
Your Honor, in talking to one of our local firms who attended the pre-bid meeting but, and also had a plan set, registered to them, but didn't submit, they said it was a timing. They, they couldn't manage the timeframe with the other jobs that they had.
Okay.
A couple of questions, Kyle. When is this scheduled to be conducted? Do you have a dates? I tried to find it, but I'm not sure if it's in there. Sorry.
Your Honor, that is not in there. The construction will begin, we're anticipating in July and it will be completed before the, the winter season.
Okay. And second part to that question, since this is such a large footprint, what kind of interruption in, in services exists because of this? Is there a plan to kind of provide alternate locations or do they just do half and then the other half or what's the plan for that?
Your Honor, Councilman, that's correct. We're going to phase this project appropriately so those that use the general aviation area can still access their hangar and then also their aircraft. It will be a, obviously an inconvenience, but we'll do it in halves like you're saying.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Ms. Gibbon, have you got anything for us?
I know.
Kyle.
I had a wonderful vacation and enjoyed the luxury of flying out of Riverton and arriving in Riverton and being home in 20 minutes and I loved it.
Mike?
I, I did not have any meetings I attended. I apologize. I've had some family issues, so I wasn't able to make the airport board and the force committee, so I don't have anything other than that.
Tim?
Nothing.
Nothing. Lance?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remind Mike-
Yes, I apologize.
Do you want to, why don't you?
Yes. I did participate in the-
Active shooter.
Active shooter.
Presentation.
That was presented by the Riverton Hospital up at Central Wyoming College and I got to be a panelist and sat there with a whole bunch of law enforcement people and felt very-
Safe.
Qualified to be sitting there. But it was a very interesting scenario. We had a presentation by a gentleman from Douglas who was actually an administrator at a hospital in Alaska that had an active shooter situation and he went through that scenario and it was very interesting to look at that and how that developed and some of the things that they've put in place, you know, to help prevent that in the future. Again, one of the points I took out is that, you know, there's a lot of prevention you can do, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to prevent a situation from happening. But again, people in general just need to be aware and, you know, the more that we plan for stuff, the better we're going to react to it. And so it was a very interesting thing and I think it was a positive thing in the community and, and the hospital did a good job of presenting that and bringing it in and, and so it's something I think we all have to be aware of.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would add, I was also able to attend and, and my takeaway from it is, is that it may even be something in that concept that city, the city hall, you know, might be advantageous to look into. We have multiple trainers. The police department has trainers, the college security staff are trainers and it's, I've been through the active shooter response training that the college sponsors and would highly recommend it to just give an opportunity for, for people in kind of a controlled, close environment and understanding of what they can do and how they can respond to situations. So maybe something to look into. I'd be happy to help connect with that. Although I believe, I know Todd was on the, Captain Byerly was on the panel and, and if I recall correctly, he had said that he and Mr. Romero, I'm sure you can probably confirm perhaps that it seemed like there was RPD trainers already trained, but-
We have a, Your Honor, if I may, we have a training scheduled for January of 2019-
Okay.
On the matter. Perfect currently.
Perfect. But I don't have anything else, Your Honor.
Thank you. City administrators, report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I would only echo that I've known Ryan Smith for about six years and he is a wealth of information and I was, I wish I could have been here for that. However, like Councilman Larson, I was with my family on vacation. I did, in Oregon. So that being said, I will though be in Cheyenne, as I denoted previously, this Thursday, trying to support our grant application. We're looking forward to that. We think we have a good, a good application, so I would hope that on Friday, the weekly report will reflect good news. On a very different note, we would express our sincere condolences to the family of Dylan Casper from our Parks Department who passed this weekend. There will be a celebration of life tomorrow evening that many of us will be attending. So we, our condolences to his family for their loss and he'll be in our thoughts and prayers. So we wanted to thank, you know, he was a, a great employee and he, and his loss will definitely be felt within our organization. And finally, there is a letter of interest that was provided for the VA, the potential VA facility, federally funded VA facility that is set to be located in a Wyoming community. We did manage to get a, a letter of interest and a significant, a significant amount of information put together to throw our hat in the ring on that. I would thank Eric Carr for his, his work on that. He did the lion's share of that and the conversa, in having the conversations that we've all had. And so we look forward to trying to get something that, like that located here. And it's a veterans' facility. It follows the greenhouse model. If anybody's ever heard of that, it's a little more open floor plan. It's a longer conversation. But as that study is geared to start today?
Today.
The, the, that study is starting today, so we did get our information in and enough time to be considered. And we hope that when they come around, we'll have the opportunity to show them what a great place we have to live and a great place to locate. So with that, I have no, nothing else to add. Other, oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. Our first Parks Committee meeting will be one week from tonight at 6:00 PM. So excited to get that moving. Solutions Committee has been moving forward. We've appreciated that participation. So it's nice to know that before July 1 and the new budget starts off, that those committees are in full, that will be in full swing. So thank you very much for that support and the assistance. I have nothing else.
Thank you. Last week, I attended WAM in Pinedale and it was, it was, it was an interesting meet, set of meetings. I spent a lot of time with the Legislative Committee and the Resolutions Committee and we got a resolution out of WAM in support of air service and they like the idea of the capacity purchase agreement. And so I think we got the support that the Department of Transportation was interested in for, for that. And we'll see, you know, we have this meeting coming up on July the 12th that'll be here in Riverton, which, where we will, I think, have a glimpse of a draft for a, a plan, a 10-year plan, a, possibly a draft request for proposal from an airline and, and maybe a few other things that have been kind of hammered out in the interim since our last meeting. So it'll be a good thing. We're going to have some kind of a, a community welcome event. I think it's going to be that Wednesday evening after the meeting schedule so that people have an opportunity to mix and mingle and if you want to come and learn about air service and the, what a capacity purchase agreement looks like. Actually, we have a capacity purchase agreement right now with Denver Air Connections. And so the state capacity purchase agreement is going to look very similar to that, except it's going to deal with four cities instead of two. So we would have Gillette, Sheridan, Riverton and Rock Springs involved in that. At the present time, Rock, Rock Springs has service from SkyWest, but they pay a minimum revenue guarantee just like we do and, and like our minimum revenue guarantee, which is getting less each year, so is theirs. Gillette paid a minimum revenue guarantee for a number of years, but now SkyWest flies at risk to Gillette. So it'll be interesting to see how that all comes together, what that plan ultimately looks like and what it might cost us to participate in it. And, but they, you know, they start out with two jet flights to Denver a day, two round trip flights to Denver a day from each of those four communities. There's, we, we can't quite figure out how, if you have more, more demand than what those two flights will pay for, how that works its way into the system. But it could be that local communities have an opportunity to buy the service up. So, you know, you come in pretty low, pretty cheap for the basic two flights a day, but if you wanted three flights a day or if you wanted a flight to Salt Lake City, you might be able to work that out to where we could buy that up. So that would depend on the ability of the community to raise funds and support that extra flying. We just don't have the details yet. We're, it's all speculative, so. But the WAM presentation was good. Kristen made a little presentation and it was a kind of how, how to improve efficiencies in government and, and she was on a, on a paddle of some high-powered mayors. And, but there was one other clerk on there and, and so she had a couple of presentations to make that were, that contributed and on that, of course, there's an attorney who's been a mayor and, you know, he's the general counsel right now for WAM, so. There was interesting information dispensed and one of the things that they talked about was, and I know that Mia will be excited to hear about, the program-based budgeting where apparently the, the city of Cody right now does that and, and so that they can tell you how much money they lose on every one of their projects. Instead of just one great big, one great big chunk of money that's gone, they can tell you absolutely every place that that gets spent. I think we're probably not too far away from that, but there is a, a handout from Cody on, on how we can do, do that and we might take a look at that, see, see if they have anything to contribute. It was eye-opening, I think, for smaller communities that don't budget the way we And the other thing that was, that was very interesting is that Matt Murdock, who is the mayor of Pinedale, is one of the principals in a company called Raven SR. And Raven SR is in the process of developing a piece of equipment that you take all your municipal garbage and shove it in one end and on the other end you get elemental carbon because it sequesters all the carbon that's in it. There's no combustion that takes place. It's all done chemically. And hydrogen gas and the hydrogen gas drives a fuel cell that produces electricity and the electricity is used to make the system work and diesel fuel comes out the tap. And so then you have diesel fuel to sell. Or if you want to tweak it just a little bit, you can call it Jet A, aviation fuel. And so here's a, so, so there's, so there's, so it looks, it looks like instead of paying an $80 tipping fee, we might be able to pay a $30 fee to push our trash into this machine and then there is no solid waste to dispose of. Isn't that, it's almost too good to imagine. Okay. But they can, they can handle, they can handle everything. They can handle plastic, they can handle, the only thing they don't do is metal. They can't make the metal go away. So that does require some sorting and some separation of, of waste, but yard waste, you know? And they're, they're doing this in Berkeley, California, and it's amazing to me that the opposition to this development. Because people don't want to do away with their compost piles.
Well, bring it here.
They have been working so hard, they have been working so hard in California to figure out how to recycle wet, wet organic material, garbage, okay, through composting. And this guy is going to turn it into diesel fuel. So here he is, he's the mayor of Pinedale. This is a Wyoming company that's putting this thing together and so they think that the first, the first one that they're going to build will be in Jackson. To deal with the big haul right now, Jackson's trucking their garbage into Idaho to bury it. And so this would just completely eliminate that. Okay? You'd have elemental carbon, graphite to sell and diesel fuel to sell. And that's, that's, that's what would come out of it. And the metal, and the metal falls out in a pile on the ground.
Maybe some electricity.
Yes, it would cost us something for electricity, but, so you got, and they can set it up to run on electricity or natural gas, either way. These guys are engineers. They got it all figured out, how to do it. So at the present time, I tried to, I tried to Google their website today and it doesn't work for me, so I don't know. But this is a, I don't know, I don't know what the timeline on is for, for the first operating system. But Matt Murdock has been talking to DEQ. They're excited about it. I think it's a good idea. The governor likes it. So it could very well be that we'll see a shift away, a change. So it could very well be that we'll see a shift away, a change in the way we look at solid waste handling in the future. There's no, there's no real timeline on this thing.
Your Honor...
Go ahead.
See, the, the real thing that, that they're not viewing is the perpetual care of these landfills.
Oh yeah, that's, that's my...
See, the perpetual care is greater than whatever it costs you to put it there and to monitor it, because you're going to be monitoring it, and we keep on moving the football zero line, and it's still 15 yards away. And so you've got a situation just like this where Tony has said, oh, and by the way, we've got a landfill down there by the, that we were addressing, and I've been asking for two years...
It's theoretical.
What is the criteria of that we, oh, well, and we never get, we never get a firm answer on it.
Always changes, so we could get one of these, we could stick it down at the baling station, okay? And they can actually take the garbage that's buried at the, at the landfill, right there, okay, at the old dump, the old garbage, 40-year-old garbage, and run it through the machine.
And you don't ta, and you don't carry it that far.
That's right.
You know?
That's right.
So...
And this thing's on, and this thing's on wheels. So you could move it to someplace else.
I'll volunteer to use the diesel. It's a heck of a trash compactor.
Oh man, it's a, it's, it, it, you know, it's, it's pretty slick looking, what they've been able to do. Okay, and they've got one, they've got one in Berkeley that runs. It's just that it fits in a closet. You know, handles, handles, it handles the, the wastepaper that they generate in their office. But that, but that's it. Okay, so that was, I guess that's what I did. Okay. Is there anything else we need to do tonight? None. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Proven second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Eight forty-three.